All right, welcome back. We are back from our lunch break and out of closed session. Was there any action to be taken out of closed session?
There is no action to report from closed session.
All right. Next is our 6.7 item, Consideration of Planning Commission: Recommendations of Proposed Development Agreement DA 24-01, Zoning Ordinance Amendment AM 24-01, General Plan Map Amendment GPAP 24-01, Gwinoc Valley Site General Plan Text Amendment GPAP 24-02, Rezone RZ 24-01, Santa Clara Middletown Housing Site General Plan of Development GPD 24-01, Rezone RZ 24-02, and Consideration of a Water Supply Assessment for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Planned Development Project at the following locations: 22671, 22901, 23534, 23573, 24221, 24566, 24783, 25111 Grange Road, 22500, 23597, 24563, 26753 Jerusalem Grade Road, 22900, 22551.
Should you prefer, you could also say at the locations listed on the agenda.
At the locations listed on the agenda. Thank you.
My pleasure.
That helps. I didn't know if I had to read all of it.
We do want to get done today.
You know, they said it was going to be quite long. I didn't know if I was going to help contribute to that. So applicant, Lotus Land Investment Holdings Incorporated, and this will be presented by Community Development Department. And we have Maria Turner here to start out.
Thank you.
Thank you for saving me from that.
My pleasure. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. We are excited today to...
Oh, one second. Lloyd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry, Director Turner. Since there is under item three of the recommendations, a reference made to an automatic appeal to your board, just in an abundance of caution as well, your board may want to take in any and all testimony and do a swearing-in for anyone who may want to testify related to that, to that subitem.
So we should start with that now, then?
Just in case, yes.
All right. Go ahead, Johanna.
If you are here and you are going to speak at all, please stand now. If you're on Zoom and you're planning on speaking, please raise your hand in Zoom. Let's give them a second on Zoom. There they go. All right, with your right hand raised. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. You have before you the Gwinoc Valley project revisited. We do have a robust presentation for you today. We have a PowerPoint for staff to present, as well as parts of it will be presented by representatives of the project developer, the applicant. We do have with us at the platform today two representatives from Acorn Environmental. They were instrumental in updating, modifying, and ensuring proper review of the draft revised programmatic EIR. And so certain slides will be covered by Senior Planner Laura Hall, and others will be covered by Ryan and Annalee at our desk. Additionally, after the staff report presentation, we do have a supplemental presentation from the applicant. And so I will defer after that to a few members of the development team. Lastly, there are a few of the documents before you that underwent wordsmithing to clarify what section of SEQA this board was reviewing versus what sections were in the planning commission's purview. And we'll cover those as amendments at the end of our presentation. So that our goal today is that as the board considers this project and then considers the instruments or the resolutions and ordinances that are before you today, it will all be very clear and proceed in an orderly fashion with minimal confusion. Because there are a number of working parts to this project. So I will turn this over to Senior Planner Laura Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, do you want to bring up the presentation?
I would just be finishing reading this, by the way.
Yep, that's it. Yep, that's it. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Crandall and Supervisors. My name's Laura Hall. I'm with the Community Development Department, and today before your consideration is the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project. This project, this project, the applicant is Lotus Land Investment Holdings Incorporated. The primary address of Gwinoc Valley Site is 22,000 Butts Canyon Road in Middletown. And the address for the Middletown Workforce Housing Site, also known as the Santa Clara Site, is 21,000 Santa Clara Road in Middletown. Next slide. Today's agenda, oops. Today's agenda includes the executive summary, summary of planning commission action, environmental process overview, summary of board actions for consideration, findings for approval, recommendations, and sample motions. Next slide. The applicant is proposing a mixed plan, mixed use resort and residential community within a portion of the Gwinoc Valley Ranch. Property which includes a general plan amendment to designate 16,000 acre Gwinoc Valley Site as resort commercial and to rezone the Gwinoc Valley District to the Gwinoc Valley District. At full buildout, throughout multiple phases, the project would allow for the development of 400 hotel rooms, 450 resort residential units, 1,400 residential estates, 500 workforce co-housing units within the zoning district. Phase one of the project includes the phase subdivision and related entitlements to allow for up to 385 residential villas, 141 residential units, excuse me, 141 residential units, 147 hotel units, and accessory resort and commercial uses. Phase one includes a subdivision and rezoning of the off-site parcel, the Middletown Housing Site, to accommodate for 21 single-family residences with optional accessory dwelling units, 29 duplex units in 15 structures, and a community clubhouse associated with associated infrastructure. Other off-site infrastructure improvements under phase one includes a proposed water supply well and an off-site parcel and pipeline located adjacent to and within Butts Canyon Road along with intersection and electric transmission line improvements. Exhibits A and C, which include the July 24 and August 8, 2025 Planning Commission Hearing Staff Reports, includes additional project details. Tentative subdivision map approval for the Gwinoc Valley Site, which includes SD 2401, Maha Farm SD 2402, Squaring Center SD 2403, Dinsenton Golf Estates SD 2404, and Bon Ridge, and the Middletown Housing Site, which includes SD 2405. Santa Clara will be sought separately at a future time. The final EIR consists of the total 2020 EIR, which includes the draft EIR, final EIR, and final EIR RADA. And partially revised EIR consists of the July 24, 2024 draft, partially revised EIR, March 2025 draft, partially revised EIR, and July 2025 final, partially revised EIR, and all appendices and other supporting information. These documents can be reviewed on the county's website and on the State Clearing House website following the links provided in the board memo. Exhibit A includes the EIR in July 24, 2025, Planning Commission Staff Report with the detailed project description and location figures. Exhibit E to the board memorandum includes the mitigation monitoring program, findings of fact, and statement of overriding considerations certified and adopted by Planning Commission, the Planning Commission on August 8, 2025. And this is the regional map that shows the Gwinoc Valley Site outlined in red and the Middletown Housing Site up to the northwest, and the infrastructure, the well and related infrastructure. Next slide. And this is the site map of the Gwinoc Valley Ranch, which shows all the parcels and the areas as well as the main resorts and other features such as aerial site access, back of house operations, and the emergency response center, et cetera. Next slide. And this map shows phase one resort communities and planning areas also at the Gwinoc Ranch Site. This is a rendering of the Middletown Workforce Housing Site. Part of the project before the board includes a request to rezone the center portion of the Middletown Workforce Housing Site from single-family residential R1 to R2 to allow the construction of duplexes. Under the proposal, single-family residential zoning will remain along the perimeter of the property to provide transition and visual barrier from off-site existing uses. The subdivision of this property and subsequent development of 36 residential units, a mix of single-family and duplex units, were fully analyzed in the 2020 EIR. The 2020 EIR analysis for the Middletown Housing Site was upheld by the trial and appellate courts, meaning it is protected by the principle of the law and new challenges cannot be brought. Next slide, please. And these are, you wanted.
There was discussion at the Planning Commission meetings regarding the proposed two-family residential rezone not fitting with the surrounding area. So these photos are to show the Board of Supervisors the subdivision with multiple family residential or duplex development that is actually at the crossroads of Santa Clara Road and, and what is that road? Barnes? Anyway, right at the corner at the entryway to Santa Clara Road. There are 10 units in that housing development. As you go closer to 2100 Santa Clara Road or the Santa Clara Workforce Housing Site, you'll see a vacant parcel currently for sale with R2 or two-family residential zoning. And then that picture on the bottom right shows the large 12-acre, approximately 12-acre proposed off-site workforce housing, which is also asking, as Laura has mentioned, for a portion of that parcel to be rezoned to R2 or two-family. Thank you.
Thank you. And this slide includes existing and proposed general plan land use designations. If approved, the existing agricultural resource conservation rural lands and rural residential designations would be changed to resort commercial throughout the parcel. Next slide. This slide shows existing and proposed zoning designations for both the Gwinoc Valley Site and the Middletown Workforce Housing Site. As shown, all of the existing combining districts at the Gwinoc Valley Site would remain the same, but the underlying base zoning would be updated to a new Gwinoc Valley District. Two new combining districts are proposed specific to the Gwinoc Valley District, and they are open space preservation and agricultural preserve. As discussed in the memo, the rezone of the Middletown Workforce Housing Site failed vote 2-2-1. Commissioner Phil was absent, which caused the automatic denial of this aspect of the project and is automatic appeal to the board. As shown on the slide, the request for the property is only for the central portion of the site to rezone to R2 to allow the development of duplexes. All existing combining districts would remain the same. Next slide. On July 24, 2025, CDD presented the project to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission continued the item to August 8, 2025 to allow for additional time to review all necessary documents and complete site visits. Draft minutes of the July 24 Planning Commission meeting are included in Exhibit B. On July 25, 2025, the applicant received comments from the State Attorney General's Office. While the Attorney General's letter was not addressed, was addressed to the applicant and not the county, the SEQA does not require written responses to comments received outside of the public circulation period. The county provided clarifications on how the issues raised in the letter from the Attorney General were already addressed in the EIR and associated technical appendices, and described what clarifications were made in response to the request in the letter. Comments are addressed in the supplemental staff report dated July 31, 2025 via modifications to the conditions of approval and clarifications to the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan and findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. The Attorney General's Office comments are included as an attachment to the August 8 staff report. The August 8, 2025, the Planning Commission, on August 8, 2025, the Planning Commission took the following actions. One, certified the final environmental impact report, ERI, State Clearing House Number 2019049134, and adopted the accompanying SEQA findings of fact, statement of overriding considerations, and mitigation and monitoring and reporting program, EIR 2401 pursuant to the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. Two, approve the use permit, PL 25112, UP 2405, as amended for the Gwinoc Valley Site. Condition upon approval of the general plan amendments, GPAP 2401 and 2402, and zoning ordinance amendment AM 2401 by the Board of Supervisors. Amendments include a condition regarding off-site water use and non-substantive typographical errors. And three, approved use permit, PL 25112, UP 2408, for the Middletown Housing Site that includes the community clubhouse, conditioned upon approval of the zoning amendment, RZ 2402 by the Board of Supervisors. Four, recommended the Board of Supervisors adopt an ordinance rezoning the Gwinoc Valley Site parcels to Gwinoc Valley Specific District, amending the zoning map and adding a new chapter to the zoning code pertaining to development in that district and specifying design guidelines for future development in the district. Five, recommended the Board of Supervisors approve a general plan of amendment, rezone general plan of development, specific plan of development, and development agreement. Six, failed to recommend approval of the rezone of the interior portion of the Santa Clara Site from single-family residential R1 to two-family R2. The failed vote 2-2-1, Commissioner Phil absent, caused the automatic denial of this aspect of the project and its automatic appeal to the board. And seven, approve the use permit to allow for the community clubhouse at the Santa Clara Site after the Planning Commission meeting. It was determined that this motion was a duplicate of action number three above. After the August 8 Planning Commission meeting, typographic errors were found in various documents prompting a special meeting of the Planning Commission on August 18, 2025 to correct the errors out of an abundance of caution. Corrected versions of the documents can be, have been included in this agenda as Exhibit F and J respectively. From here, I'm going to transition to Acorn to provide a high-level summary of environmental analysis and process that has been conducted to date. Next slide.
Good afternoon. My name is Annalee Sanborn with Acorn Environmental. As we have already discussed a bit here, the Planning Commission has certified the EIR for this project, but because the EIR also supports the board's decision-making, I'm going to attempt to provide a very brief summary of the environmental process to date. An EIR was completed and approved in 2020, but legal challenges against that EIR resulted in the need to update and recirculate the community evacuation and the wildfire risk analyses, which the county completed in the partially revised EIR. Two draft partially revised EIRs were circulated, one in July of 2024 and one in March of 2025. And the final, excuse me, the final PR EIR was published last month in July of 2025. Separately from the PR EIR process, the applicant was negotiating with one of the original challengers to the 2020 EIR and entered into a settlement agreement with the Center for Biological Diversity in early August of this year. And as you know, the Planning Commission certified the EIR on August 8. Okay, if you can move forward, please. And again, and again. Perfect, thank you. So in addition to recirculating the wildfire chapter of the EIR, which included both the community evacuation and the wildfire risk analyses, the partially revised EIR also assessed potential changes and impacts from what was analyzed in 2020 due to project modifications that have occurred since then. These project modifications can be grouped into the following categories: the parcel reconfiguration, Grange Road Connector and Connector Roadways, greenhouse gas or GHG emission reduction measures, updates to the wildfire prevention plan, and the drought management plan. The map on the screen shows the area of potential effect, or APE. The original 2020 project APE is shown in orange, and the current modified project is in blue on top of it. And you can see that the project modifications removed some of the development that is shown in orange in the northeastern portion. And it also added that Grange Road Connector, which is showing as a blue line going northwest away from the bulk of the development. I would like to emphasize that the area of potential effect is larger than the actual development footprint of the project. The footprint of roads, infrastructure, resort hotel uses, those are all delineated, but residential uses are not known precisely, as they will be designed by future owners of those lots, consistent with the design guidelines. Therefore, the APE includes the entire extent of the residential lots, which could be several acres, while the house footprint and the actual development impact would be a much smaller portion of that lot. This means that the EIR measured extremely conservative impacts to resources like agricultural farmland or biological habitats, because it assumed that the entire residential parcel could be impacted anywhere within that footprint, but that the actual impacts will be lower once houses are designed. Next slide, please. The updated wildfire prevention plan informed the expanded wildfire risk and community evacuation analysis that were contained in the PR EIR, but I will not go into every detail presented on this slide. Rather, I'll just call out a few key features. There's the addition of a third point of emergency access and egress called the Grange Road Connector. And this will allow, in addition to the two previously planned entrances off of Butts Canyon Road, in the event of an emergency only, there will be a third access route for people to evacuate off of the property and first responders to enter the property from the north. The fire brake system and the use of roadway shoulders for additional fire brake protection has been expanded. has been expanded. Active landscape management using grazing and manual vegetation removal is a large component of the plan. There will be a new emergency response center that will ultimately become a new fire station in the southern portion of the county, and temporary refuge areas and safety zones at key locations are placed throughout the property. Next slide, please. As part of the approval or certification of the EIR, the Planning Commission adopted a statement of overriding considerations for significant and unavoidable impacts in a few topical areas. In aesthetics, Butts Canyon Road is a designated scenic corridor, and the project must have an upgraded access point on this road, which does lead to a significant and unavoidable impact under SEQA. In the category of agricultural and forestry resources, some important farmland would be removed by the project, and although there was mitigation to reduce the impact by permanently conserving farmland, there would still be a net loss, and therefore it is considered a significant and unavoidable impact under SEQA. In the topic of greenhouse gas emissions, although the project modifications include a host of additional GHG reduction measures and mitigation requiring purchasing carbon offset credits that would completely make the project neutral in terms of carbon emissions, for a project of this size and the amount of carbon credits that would be required, the county cannot guarantee availability, and therefore the impact remains significant and unavoidable after mitigation to be conservative. In the area of noise, the significant and unavoidable impact is from traffic on area roadways, which leads to a corresponding increase in traffic noise, which would exceed the county's significance thresholds in a few locations. So the traffic noise is considered significant and unavoidable under SEQA, but operational and construction emissions were all reduced to less than significant levels. And finally, transportation. The state does consider a project to have a significant impact in vehicle miles traveled if it cannot reduce its trips to a certain percentage below the regional average, and given the rural and remote nature of the Guanac Valley Site, even with the implementation of transportation demand management plan and a number of different trip reduction strategies, it cannot be guaranteed that that 15% reduction will be met. All other environmental impacts were reduced to less than significant levels with the inclusion of mitigation measures, which were adopted in a mitigation monitoring and reporting program by the Planning Commission. So I will not use up any more of the Board's valuable time diving into each of the issue areas from the EIR, but should you have any additional questions that come up later, we're still available. I'll now turn it back to Laura.
Thank you, Annalee. The Board will consider the Planning Commission's recommendations related to the general plan amendment and rezones for the Guanac Valley-specific zoning and Santa Clara Middletown Housing Site. The Board will also consider approval of the development agreement and water supply analysis. A summary of specific project components requiring Board action, as well as a summary of the staff's analysis, are included in the Board's memorandum. Further details and analysis can be found in the previously mentioned planning commission staff reports. The following requires Board approval. Number one, general plan map, GPAP 2401, and text amendment, GPAP 2402, of the Guanac Valley Site Parcels, general plan of development. The action includes a resolution to amend the general plan land use designations for the Guanac Valley Site to residential commercial, consistent with the intent of the area plan. Number two, rezone RZ 2401 and zoning text AM 2401 of the Guanac Valley Site Parcels, a Guanac Valley-specific district. This action includes an ordinance that would change the County of Lake zoning map for the entire site area, with exception of off-site workforce housing site from various base zoning districts into new zoning district, GVD, Guanac Valley Zoning District. The draft ordinance for the zoning code text amendment is included in Exhibit F, and the draft ordinance for the map amendment is included in Exhibit G. Three, rezone RZ 2402 of the interior portion of Santa Clara, also known as the Middletown Workforce Housing Site, from single-family R1 to two-family residential R2. The Board will consider adopting an ordinance amending Section 21-3.7 of Chapter 21 of the Ordinance Code of the County of Lake by adopting a sectional district map, number 37.3.7B1, with number that's not yet filled in. This ordinance would change the County of Lake zoning map at the proposed Santa Clara Workforce Housing Site from R1, FF, FW, WW, single-family residential, floodway, fringe, floodway, and waterway, to R2, FF, FW, WW, two-family residential, floodway, fringe, floodway, and waterway. Number four, development agreement, DA 2401. The proposed development agreement outlines the project as described in the general plan of development and specific plan of development for the new zoning district, GVD, which is a combination of PDR, Plan Development Residential, and PDC, Plan Development Commercial, in response to the goals and objectives of the Middletown area. Findings for approval are discussed in detail on Page 40 of the July 24, 2025 Planning Commission staff report and are summarized below. The development agreement and resolution to adopt the development agreement is included in Exhibit I. And lastly, five, the water supply assessment. The county requested additional information on several water supply-related topics during preparation of the draft PR EIR. As a result, a water supply technical memorandum was prepared that includes additional details on the mitigation measures pertaining to the off-site well, the PG&E contamination plume, and off-site groundwater users, to comply with the Lake County Ordinance 3106 enacted after the 2020 EIR was prepared. A draft management plan was prepared and is included as Appendix G2 to the draft PR EIR. These analyses conclude that groundwater availability is sufficient to meet project demands even under dry and very dry conditions, and that existing and proposed wells can reliably supply potable and non-potable water for all project phases. Additionally, the drought management plan outlines a stage conservation program to reduce water use, monitor supply capacity, and ensure water supply reliability for potable golf course and ester-estherin center uses during declared droughts. Together, these findings demonstrate that the site can provide an adequate private water system, consistent with the regulatory requirements of the State Water Resource Control Board Division of Drinking Water. Wastewater will be treated onsite and subject to regulations and permitting by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. A resolution certifying the water supply assessment is included in Exhibit L.
Just for clarification, Laura, in activity number one before the Board spoke about the land use designation changing to residential commercial, actually it's changing to resort commercial for the project site. That was an easy mistake. No problem, handing it back.
Thank you. And the findings for approval are discussed in detail beginning on Page 34 of the July 24, 2025 Planning Commission staff report and are summarized as follows. General plan amendment, number one, the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan and the Middletown area plan. Number two, that establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use, or be detrimental to property and improvements in the neighborhood or the general welfare of the county. Three, the proposed land use designation change in the public best interest, is in the public best interest. There would be a community benefit, and other existing and allowed uses will not be compromised. Four, changes or alterations have been required in or incorporated into the project which avoid and substantially lessen the significant environmental effect as identified in the final EIR. Specific economic, legal, socio-technological, and other considerations, including provision of employment opportunities for higher-trained workers, make infeasible the mitigation measures identified in the final EIR. Sorry about that. Uh-oh. We go too far ahead. And the rezone and general plan of development, number one, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions and policies of this code, the general plan, Lake County zoning ordinance, and any approved zoning or land use plan. Number two, that there are adequate public and private services, including but not limited to fire protection, water supply, sewer disposal, and police protection to serve the project. Number three, that the site for the project is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to adopt the type of use and level of development proposed. Number four, that the streets, highway, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the specific proposed use. Development agreement, number one, is consistent with the objectives, policies, general land uses, and programs specified in the general plan and any applicable specific plan or community plan. Two, is compatible with the uses authorized in and the regulations prescribed for the zoning district in which the real property is located. Three, will be detrimental to public health, safety, I think that's supposed to be, will not be detrimental to public health, safety, and general welfare. Or will adversely, will not adversely affect the orderly development of property or preservation of property values. Water supply assessment. The water supply assessment complies with the requirements of the California Water Code, Section 10910, and demonstrates that projected water supplies will be sufficient to meet the demands of the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project, including both Phase 1 and future phases, along with other planned future development and existing uses. Two, the water supply assessment concludes that water supplies will remain adequate through 2040 with projected surpluses, and that demand can meet without overdrafting groundwater resources or exceeding the available surface water allocations for the project. And three, the final EIR, State Clearing House Number 2019049134, for the Guanac Valley Mixed Use Development Project, which includes an analysis of groundwater impacts and water availability, was certified by the Planning Commission on August 8, 2025. Now I would like to bring the Board's attention to some clarification in the language in some of the ordinances and resolutions related to SEQA review that will require amendments. With that, staff would like to revise some of the recommendations in the memo to add, as amended where appropriate. These wordsmithing changes affect recommendations 1, 3, and 6.
And again, as we stated earlier, these minor amendments to the wording are for clarification regarding which sections of SEQA review are under the purview of the Board of Supervisors and which remain with the Planning Commission.
And last, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the project with the sample motions listed in the August 26, 2025 Board memorandum. And that is the end of the presentation, and Maria already listed who can be here to answer questions, and we will answer questions as we can.
We are happy to answer any questions the Board may have. However, we do recommend that we move to the second part of our presentation, which is a PowerPoint led by the developer.
Okay.
And so we would call Kevin Case up to the stand, please, or up to the podium.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Case, one of the partners with Mahamon Development Group.
One sec, real quick, Kevin, just real quick.
It would be the first one, the SC presentation, I'll get it, I'll get ended in just shortly here. Okay? I'll let you know when we're ready to move forward with that one. Thank you. Chair Crandall, Board of Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. Our teams just wanted to tell you how appreciative we are of the work that you've put into, devoted to studying these incredible reports. We know it's very, very time-consuming. This project, obvious at the size and the magnitude of it, it's taken a lot of work, and so we just want to tell you, just thank you for spending the time to go through that time and spend the time with it. All the times and effort spent on complying with the many areas of SEQA centered around land stewardship, environmental impacts, plants, animals, green gase emissions, sustainability, countless other critical important components of the development that we tend to lose sight of the valuable attributes and benefits that we, that Guanac Valley development will bring to our county. You will hear from a few of the community leaders that live every day with the challenges in our healthcare system, the educational system, the emergency services, recruitment, and other vital services, which were facing significant challenges, often feeling the strain of limited resources and funding. With the development of Guanac Valley, we are presented today with an opportunity to make positive changes, which can enhance the quality of life for our Lake County residents through new and sustainable tax revenue. Education is the cornerstone of a thriving society. Our children, our teachers deserve access to quality resources required to inspire and empower our next generation. Healthcare services through additional funding resulting from the development could also help expand our healthcare facilities, attract top-tier medical professionals, and help ensure that every resident has access to the care that they need when it's required. Emergency services, we all know this is the backbone of our community and the safety and our well-being. Again, with increased funding, we can support our firefighters, law enforcement, ensuring that they have the staff, the tools, and the training necessary to protect us all. This is our chance to turn our aspirations for a better community into reality. As we stand at the crossroads of this opportunity, we must recognize that the decisions we make today will shape the future of our community for generations to come. We have met with and listened to many within our community, and we genuinely respect their opinions and their thoughts. We are committed to continuing to listen and to work to better understand their viewpoints, and we will continue to build alliances in the community with those that are not, that not only celebrate progress, but also with those that are more reluctant to change. While a small majority oppose the certain aspects of the development, those individuals bring value to the decisions that are made, and we want to say thank you, and we encourage those to continue to reach out so that we can have meaningful and productive conversations. As you will hear from my partner Jonathan Breen and others on our team, this development is more than unique in many aspects. The beauty of the land is the candor. The beauty of the land is the canvas that was entrusted to us to embrace, and we are incredibly responsible for its natural resources and for its irreplaceable assets. Our vision for the development surpasses the property lines of our property, and it encompasses all of the communities within our county, Middletown, Clear Lake, Lakeport, Kelseyville, Hidden Valley Lake, Upper and Lower Lake, and many others that are thriving from vibrant communities that we can support our families, our businesses, with essential services. While it's natural for some of us to feel apprehensive about change, we must embrace the potential for growth and improvement that comes with it. There is no doubt that this development is a major leap forward, an opportunity to reshape and rebrand our community in a way that aligns with our shared values and our aspirations. Throughout history, communities have been embraced, changed, that have embraced change have emerged stronger and more resilient. By supporting this development, we are not investing in buildings and spaces, we are investing in our future. We are laying a foundation for a community that supports our residents, nurtures its children, and provides essential services for all. In conclusion, I ask that each of you to consider the long-term benefits of this development, not just for today, but for the future of our county and our individual communities. Together, let us embrace change, take bold steps forward, and create a more prosperous future for everyone in our community. While I'm here, I thought it might be advantageous to take an opportunity to just do a quick presentation for you. I know it's been a long day already, you guys have been here since early, but I do want, one of the topics that's continued to come up in the conversations, and probably one of the largest, biggest hurdles that we've had, is our Santa Clara Middletown housing. And so if I'd had just a moment, if you want to go ahead and put that presentation up, I'll walk you through real quick. We've enhanced and done a little better job than we did prior with the Planning Commission, and I think it'll help clarify some of the questions that some might have. Oh, there it is, it's up there, yeah. Okay, if you want to scroll down. Yeah. Again, it won't take long, there's just a few present slides here, but this right here just shows, this right here is the location of the proposed, with again, the rezoning of the R2 in the center there, but this shows around, the yellow is the low-density residential, then you've got the lighter color orange is your medium density, and then your high-density are these darker colors. So you can see it's sprinkled with all the different densities there in the Middletown area. If you'll go to the next slide. This, we've heard many people talking about they're building in a flood zone, and just wanted to clarify that, this is a flood zone. This is a 100-year flood area, this is the creek, this is the boundary right here of the AE, and then this is the flood zone of AO. Basically what that means, it's about a 1% in over 100 of a year, 1% a year that you would have a flood here. And so as a result of that, and part of the FEMA, you have to have, one of the requirements, you have to have flood insurance if you build here, and also you have to build up, and we would build these on at least a minimum of one foot elevation increase. If you, when we go to the next plan, this is what was zoned, this is the tentative subdivision plan from 2006. You can see there was 49 individual lots that were on this particular plan, change So this is what we're, this is our proposed, and again, this is, this is concept, as you'll see down here, we know we've got to go back before the Planning Commission, we've got a lot of work to do to refine, but we wanted at least give you an opportunity today to see what it could be, and some of the vision that we're looking at. Some of the things that we did is, is example here, this is in the, in the flood area, that's the only building that's in the higher AE area, that's our clubhouse with a pool, pickleball courts over here. What we've also done, which I thought was really pretty impressive, was these are the duplexes, this area right here is the duplexes. Here, there's 14, which gives us 28 units, but what we did is we separated them, so instead of the doors being next door to each other, there's a separation, you drive in, there's a trellis here, then you go into this unit, or you could go into this unit. So we just thought that might be a little better way to break it up. Again, this is a, we took one of our lots, and this is a park, and we wanted to make sure that we had plenty of green spaces, particularly when you come in here. And then these on the perimeter, these are our single-family, and we've got 21 single-family homes around the perimeter here. Next slide, please. And this just gives you, there was, there was some confusion about, there was a prior exhibit that showed a footprint of 1,300 feet, and so there was concerns and thoughts about us building four and five bedrooms in 1,300 square feet units. I think that'd be more like a prison. But obviously, it would be almost impossible, that's like 260 feet per bedroom, without any living spaces or, or shared living and dining. So, but that was just the footprint, that was just to show the area, these are two-story, we can do the math, it's 2,600 square feet are the majority of these units, most of them are four bedrooms, and again, this is the concept. We'll drill down on this at the proper time when we're ready to build, to come back again before the board. We've even talked about creating a community outreach team to help us to kind of design what these are. I'm not a 30-year-old, I wish I was, so I wouldn't be occupying here, but if that's kind of the median age, then we'd want them to participate with this design as well. So anyway, if you want to go to the next slide, I'll just show you a couple elevations, these are just layouts of what they would look like with the bedrooms, two bedrooms downstairs, two upstairs. This is a studio here, so it's got its own living room and so forth, which is another option, and then this one's got, down the downstairs, got a kitchen and a shared living space here. Okay, next slide, please. And these are some elevation, again, don't pay attention to the colors or anything else, obviously they have metal roofs for fire protection, but these are just some ideas and thoughts of what they could look like. Again, pay attention, these are truly conceptual, and we'll work with the community to make sure that it blends in with the Middletown. Can you go to one more slide? And again, this is here, this is showing the square footage, these are the smaller units here of the duplexes, and these are about 2,01975. It breaks down per room, the square footage of each room, so they're pretty generous spaces, and the dens and so forth, so. And then the next slide, please. And then again, these are just showing what these duplexes look like, I told you, you would drive in through the middle of them, carport here, then you could enter your duplexes on either side here. And next one. So this is a good, a good shot here, we laid in, basically you can see this is the perimeters here of the development, laid in on, from Google Earth, and you can see this was where the apartments had burned. You know, we understand that during the fire, Middletown lost about a third of its residents, to my knowledge, it have pretty much not returned, and so we know there's a shortage of housing in Middletown, that's just one example, obviously there's more multifamily apartments and so forth over here by the school. But again, aesthetically, and what we want this to look like, we'll be very, very conscientious about, again, the aesthetics, and to make sure that it blends in with the Middletown, but we just wanted you to have a little bit of idea, and you can also see just some of the surrounding properties. Next slide, please. This one just zooms in a little bit closer, it gives you a little bit more kind of of a feel, you can see there is generous green spaces, it's not jammed in like an apartment, and this is the little park I was talking about, again, this is the clubhouse, and then pickleball, and then I think there's one more here. Two more. And then this, again, this is, that would be the clubhouse, back there in the background, this is the pickleball courts, and then again, one of the residential units right here in the background, and then there's one more, I believe. Yeah. So again, sidewalks, that's just, there's the pickleball, and this is a single-family, one of the single-family homes. Again, don't pay attention to colors, it could be whatever wanted to be, but it's, again, it's just to give you an idea of what it would look like, but we would be very committed to making sure that it blends well with downtown. So, anyway, I didn't know if there was any questions or anything about this that I could answer, if not, I'm going to turn it over to my partner Jonathan Breen. Thank you.
My name's Jonathan Breen, I'm a partner with Kevin Case at Mahaman, the developer of the project. Today, I just wanted to walk you through, well, before I start, I just wanted to say thank you to each of you for making the effort, and I know your time is busy, and you've got a lot going on, but I really wanted to say thank you for coming out to the project, spending many hours, meeting, looking through the site, and having lots of questions, and giving us an opportunity to answer any questions that you had previously. Today, I just wanted to walk you through, and again, some of you have seen this, others might not have, I just wanted to sort of walk you through where we started with the project. So back in 2016, when we acquired the project, we were very fortunate in that, basically we have, you know, up to 10% of vineyards or POU equivalent to Napa Valley. So Napa Valley has 400 wineries, we have one. So it's a very, very large scale, I think it's the largest in Northern California as a contiguous vineyard and agricultural development, and in today's world of fires, which we're all obviously very concerned about, it really, it gave us an opportunity of being able to utilize the vineyards as a way of designing the project within the vineyards for fire protection, both for the village and for all the homes. So as an example, this is the current property, so our village will be in this area along the water. These have now been planted with vineyards, vineyards, and more vineyards through here, and as an example, this is chaparral, and heavy vegetation that's highly flammable. So what will happen as we go through the development, we will remove this chaparral, and we would put housing in this area, and then build with the latest fire specs for the buildings themselves, and then we build to a zone within five feet, there's no vegetation, and then we have these second line and a third line, and obviously, we've been working with both CAL FIRE and UC Berkeley and other fire specialists of making sure whatever we design and build is to the latest fire specifications, and in certain cases, we're even sort of exceeding that by putting exterior fire sprinklers on all buildings. So for example, even if you're not at your house at the building, it detects the heat coming towards it, and then it sprays a film over the house or building to protect it from fires. So these are all the things that we've been working on since day one in incorporating into the project. We're very fortunate, we also have seven lakes, and so a lot of the development has been surrounding the lakes, so it's really the water and the vineyards and the agriculture. This is another very good example of, over the development of the vineyards, these were rock piles that were, you know, so when they cleared out all of these areas, they brought out a lot of rocks, and so they stored the rocks into these, all of these areas through here. So what we're able to do now is leave all the vineyards and come and take this rock pile, we can take the rock, we can crush it and reuse it for roadways, and then we can put a house, one house or two houses here, and so the idea is, as we develop through this, we will put houses on all of these rock piles all through here, and leave all the vineyards and the agriculture around it, which again, great fire protection and obviously the aesthetic beauty. And this is sort of coming into the village through this area here, and so the idea, again, we would remove the flammable brush through certain areas here, and this would be the hotel rooms. In this area here, we've got a winery and a cave planned into this mountain. I think many of you, when you came out to the property, we came up here, and this was one of the advantage points we looked at when we looked over the lake. So looking from this angle shows you, when we talked about a, one of the means, we've got five different, we call it safety zones, or temporary refuge areas, and really, it's up to CAL FIRE and the fire, and the Sheriff's Department, but it gives them another option that, instead of telling people that you have to go and evacuate on, straight out onto the street, they're able to shelter people in place, and that could be for an hour, five hours, three days, it's up to them. So by us working together with them, we've, we'll create, we're having a cave with air ventilation, so people could be, could basically temporary refuge in that area, and I'll show you some other areas that we have. The overall, this is the village, so this is what we are looking at, which is the winery, and then the cave that sits underneath in here. The village is a small amount of, you know, barn-style buildings around the main lake, and the village is all open, is open to the public. So this is sort of a rendering of the style, it's into very much the Lake County agriculture and barn-style architecture, and so surrounding the village is again, is vineyards, you know, and other sort of agriculture, like a farm, and any orchards, and so again, all stuff that is very good from a fire protection point of view. These areas here are just small little ones, so they're like a restaurant, a coffee shop, we've got a, basically, a barn here, and so that's sort of like weekends where we can bring local produce and artists that can come and showcase the region. So we want this to really be a place where we showcase Lake County and the local community, and work with us, both with our farm, but also with local farmers in the area to be able to buy, and all of our produce can come from the local area rather than trying to bring stuff in. Again, just another view walking down through the village. This is a reception building with a small pond in front. This is driving in to the main entryway for the project. It's been a cattle and sheep, you know, ranch for many, many years, so we want to continue that, and obviously with sheep and cattle and horses. Again, the village with a, sort of a small river running around, around the side of And this is the winery that I had mentioned previously with a cave behind, and that in the past, we had been working with CAL FIRE and UC Berkeley on what are the techniques that we can use this as a refuge spot. One of them, another refuge spot, and this is probably one of the main ones, is Apollo and Equestrian area. All of this area is probably about 100 acres, and so we're building this sort of lake on this side, and we've got the Polo and Equestrian clubhouse here, so Grange Road comes off this side. So again, it enables us to have a point that if there was a fire that was, you know, started in the middle of the night, people could evacuate to here straight away and use the clubhouse as a means of a temporary refuge spot, and then at the direction of CAL FIRE and the Sheriff's Department could then be directed either stay put, or then to move out through Grange Road, or the three other access points we have onto Butts Canyon Road. Just shows you the scale, you know, this itself is about 10, 15 acres, just this, it's alone, so again, people could drive onto here, again, for local community, if there was a fire coming towards the property, community could come onto this property, bring horses and animals, and could also shelter in place. So it's not just about us, we are one community, and, you know, when there's a fire, we all work together. So it's not just about us, we are one community, and you know, when there's a fire, we all work together. These are the stables. Main clubhouse overlooking the field. That's the clubhouse and a tennis academy. That's from inside looking back out, and just the style. The stables and pony camp. And that's one of the Polo Villas. And then the other area that we have is the golf course. Tom Doak is a famous golf course architect. He's designed eight of the top 100, and has also worked on many of the others in terms of retrofit. So Tom's come out and laid out a golf course, not the typical golf course where it always comes back to the 18th. This one goes out for about seven miles, and you, where you start and finish, seven miles away. And in between, you end up going through vineyards, then you come down a cliff, and then you end up in the back nine, which is, there's no development, it's just cattle and sheep, and you end up down at a little barn. So it was something that was inspired by Adrian Zeca, that just didn't want a typical golf course going up and down. And he really pushed Tom to do something different, because what he said was that if I'm here with my wife, I would actually like just to go, even if I'm not at golf, I'd like to go for a walk, or be in a golf cart and be able to experience the property. So it wasn't, it was sort of a different idea pushed to really, again, for the love of the land. Adrian's always been about, this land is so precious, and how do people can go and view it and get the feel of the land without breaking it up and just putting one hole after another. The benefit also in this is that this is another refuge area. So again, you could drive on here, park your cars, and then we will use this, this is the first clubhouse as a refuge point. We have a second refuge point at the 18th as well. And this is sort of the clubhouse, again, trying to keep that Lake County feel. So you come at the end, and it's just like an old country barn as the 18th clubhouse. And again, just to finish up, we got a report done, just to look, an independent report just to look at over a 25-year period, what the project would inject into Lake County. It came back at $3.8 billion in economic benefit over that 25 years, and that was broken down to about 2.5 in the labor income, 635 in local taxes, and 212 in state taxes. After 10 years, once we were able to sell the real estate in phase one, it looked at both from revenues from real estate taxes, which is $20 to $22 million per year. And then over 25 years, it was 67,000 jobs. You break it down, that's 2,688 jobs per year. What will happen is it'll be, it'll be the construction in the first, say, call it 10 years, and that'll be obviously the amenities and then the building of the villas. So there's going to be a large amount of construction work, and then thereafter will be all the permanent jobs. There have been comments, or people have said to me, I hear you're bringing in 1,000 people from outside of America or from elsewhere. And I just want to explain today, we've done project, Adrian's based in Singapore. He's regarded, he's built 110 hotels around the world. And every time he goes to a place, it's about the local community, it's the local history, it's the local culture. And that's, really has defined him, he's now 92. And again, we looked at this and found this 10 years ago. And so it's about training the locals, the local kids, the local people. We don't want to be bringing in people from around the world. We will bring in an echelon of people to do training, and really then they can teach the younger or the locals. So over time, you know, it's something that, it becomes self-sufficient. And we've done that in other projects in Miami, Turks and Caicos, where we brought in people from Bali, that was in Miami, Philippines, in Turks and Caicos. And it was really training all the locals. And so we want to do the same here, the echelon of jobs is not only hospitality, you know, it's both in agriculture, construction, you know, there's just, there are going to be so many jobs and, you know, things that we're going to need from the local community and people. So we want to have training programs, work with the community colleges, work with the high schools. Again, kids on summer could do internships with us, and then by the time they hit grade 12, they might have a passion, and whether it's coming and doing a trade, whether it's going to college and coming back, whether it's going to community college. Again, as Kevin said, the education for us is really important, and not only education for the younger generation coming through, but even, you know, people that are in their 30s, 40s, 50s, and 60s, all of us need to get sometimes retrained, or find a new aspect that we want to be trained. So that to us is really important, and I just want to dispel any rumors that for us, it's really about the local community and training. So I'd like to say thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Would there be any more presentations? Any more presentations? Okay. Come on up.
Yeah, I will. No problem. I'll introduce myself. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, I'm Josh Demann. I'm the lead scientist with the UC Berkeley Disaster Lab. We are the ones that conducted the wildfire risk assessment in the most recent phase of the update to the EIR. I will briefly introduce what we do, just to give you some context, and then how we've engaged with the project around this wildfire risk assessment. So at the UC Berkeley Disaster Lab, as cool as that name sounds, we don't generally cause disasters, we try to build resilience to them, and we focus a lot on environmental disasters. Been doing this now for, well, career-wise, 20-something years as a lab at UC Berkeley, holding wildfire resilience into the very beginnings of the project, the very design and the core considerations of how you bring in this number of people and this number of residences to a landscape in Northern California and Lake County that's been deemed very high fire risk by CAL FIRE's maps and CPUC's maps. So that's what we've been doing. And as part of that process, we've helped connect with other labs and researchers across our campus, best available fire science materials, scientists looking at new innovations in fire-resistant materials, new sensors for early detection, new machine learning models to be able to process and forecast fire risk, and all the rest. One of those ended up being an assessment of how fire spreads across golf courses, for instance, or irrigated landscapes, which of course is a big part of a place that has a lot of agriculture or development like this, that has golf courses and other irrigated landscapes as part of it. So I won't go too far into this particular risk assessment. What we did for this most recent version, as part of the last stage of the entitlements process, was engage in quantitative modeling of fire risk. So not just the qualitative assessment of defensible space and home hardening, and what we kind of all know is important across the landscape and veg management, but being able to quantify what that means for how fast fire spreads across the landscape, and how intense the fire that's spreading across that landscape actually damages the vegetation or structures. And what we've found, just to jump to the conclusions real quick, because I know you've all read a lot of material on this probably, there's much more, there's a 300-page addendum to the EIR if you really want to dive in and you love fire science. Overall, with the design features that are incorporated or planned as part of this development and the mitigation measures, so design features are kind of the way you build the structure, the way you lay out your yard perhaps, mitigation features being the ongoing stuff that you do to mitigate fire on the landscape. On average, across the entire site, reducing fire intensity by about 50% against baseline, against what it is right now. And currently, the site already is used often from CAL FIRE as a source of backstop, incident command, you know, creating backburns and other things for fires that happen to pass close by. So this is a 50% reduction beyond current, and reducing the average rate of spread by about 30%. So slowing down the pace at which any fire, whether it's onsite ignition or whether it's a fire that's coming through the site from outside, anything passing through the site is going to slow down even more than it already would. That results, just to be clear, in a reduction in the rate of spread across the site. So it takes an additional, anywhere from two to six hours for fire to reach the other side of the site if it's coming, if it's already a fully-formed fire frontier hitting the property boundaries. There's a reduction in canopy fire activity by about 25% as well due to all of these factors that are being planned into the design. And that's important because canopy fire creates large amounts of radiant heat, but it also is a good source of embers, which of course, blow and then get caught up in vents and whatnot. And then the last piece of this is that, so as part of this, in assessing the design features and the mitigation measures for fire resilience of this site, developers committed to not only meeting California Wildland Urban Interface Building Code, which of course you have to in a site like this, but also meeting the Institute for Building and Home Safety's Wildfire Prepared Home Standards, which is kind of considered an industry best practice now, for additional measures above and beyond the WHOE code, as well as NFPA's, the National Fire Protection Agency's, standards for building in high-risk fire zones. All of those factors are built into not only the structures, so fire-resistant material design, vents, all the things that many of you already know about in terms of best practices for building resilience. And then above and beyond that, there are measures that further reduce the risk to the structures, including external suppression systems, the early detection systems that would trigger those. So fire retardant spraying on the outside of structures once a trigger hits in terms of a detected fire nearby. The ability to detect those systems early enough so that that can happen rapidly, as well as the construction and staffing of the Emergency Response Center, which will become a fire station for the South Lake County Fire District, which will improve, we modeled fire response times to the site, will improve fire response times to the vast majority of the site to sub-five minutes, which is kind of the standard that every fire department and district really wants to reach across the state. So there's a good response times, as well as become a resource for mutual aid across, of course, the rest of the county whenever there's a large incident. And I will leave it at that. So thank you very much for the time. I'm also here for questions, if there's anything fire science-y that needs to be answered.
All right, thank you. This isn't public comment, is this another?
Chairman Crandall, Board of Supervisors, my name is Don Smith. I am the Director of Wellbeing and Engagement, Community Wellbeing Engagement for a healthcare organization here in our county. I also represent that healthcare organization serving on the Board of Directors for the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, currently serving as the President of the Board of Directors. One of the responsibilities as Director of Community Wellbeing is to work collaboratively with stakeholders in the health and wellbeing of the people of Lake County to determine the top health priorities. This is done through a process called the Community Health Needs Assessment, and some of you very generously served on the steering committee that once the data was collected from our 2025 CHNA, reviewed the findings, and then set the priorities that stakeholders could focus on in their specific capacities to impact the health of our county.
Don, can we take a break, a five-minute break, and we'll get right back to it? Sorry about that, I should have said that right before you started. That was requested by staff, so if we could just take a quick break, and then we'll come right back to it. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
It sounds like we're just gonna bring it up and make sure, because it was in the, it's just not in my packet.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome back from the break. So that was all of the presenters, and we were...
Yes, thank you Chair Crandall, that does conclude our presentation, so we'll turn it back to the board.
It's, did the gentleman, Don?
Yeah, he's gonna come back after public input.
Okay, okay.
And so, are there any questions from the board before I open it up to the public?
No, I will have some comments, but I can do it after the public, if you like.
Yeah, yeah, whatever. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll open it up for public comment as of right now, and we'll go from there. State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Max Hopkins, and let me say again, as I told the Planning Commission, I used to sit in the Planning Commission's seat for a number of years, not in this jurisdiction, but I wholeheartedly appreciate the amount of effort and time and attention it takes to vet these projects, and certainly this is an enormous one. So I'll keep my comments brief, as my, one of my late-grade mentors always said, "The brain cannot comprehend what the ask cannot endure." Point number one, before the Planning Commission, one of the most telling comments was that when, when kids graduate from high school here in Lake County, they should be given a diploma and a bus ticket, because there's no future. What this project presents is truly a monumental future with education, employment opportunities in an environmentally sensitive and just astounding process. I myself have four children, I'm looking forward to having grandchildren, I would love nothing more than to be able to relocate here and, and raise the grandkids here and give them those opportunities. I, you know, the term "once-in-a-lifetime opportunity" has been kicked around a lot to the point of being cliche. I think this is a once-in-maybe-a-millennium opportunity. It hits all the key components necessary. I've been in and out of construction in various capacities for the last 30 years, and this to me is a grand slam home run. My last comment would be, I know there is, in some areas, a small vocal minority, and I, again, I respect your, your need to listen to everyone, but I think overall, in the governance of a just community, what, and I'm not trying to tell you what to do, you know better than I do, but there's gotta be a balance between the monumental benefits, the billions of dollars this project will bring to the county, as opposed to the opposition of a relatively few. Thank you very much for your attention.
Good afternoon Board, my name is Chris Snyder, I'm the Political Director for the Operating Engineers Local Three. We represent, we're the largest local in the United States, we represent about 40,000 folks, and we're based mostly Northern California. We're here in full support of this project, it's really an exciting opportunity. I live in Sonoma County, but I was kind of the labor leader here in 2015 when the fires hit, and spent a lot of time up here, going through that with, with you all, and since that time, my heart has absolutely been with Lake County. We helped rebuild, we helped build the geysers initially, when that was the biggest thing going on up here, but this is a real opportunity to keep investing in the community, and also to our apprenticeship program, we have about 1,200 folks in it, and there's a huge opportunity to bring folks into our, to work on this project. And these job, these are jobs with careers that have pensions, they have retired medical, it's such a rarity in America today, and as you all know, we all need housing. And another piece of this is, we also represent the construction side of things, but we also represent on the public employee side, we represent about 10,000 public employees in Northern California, but we represent Lake County Employees Association here, but we also represent several of the badge units and police departments around the county, and of course, this is gonna be a huge boon to the tax base, and it's gonna allow you, you folks to, you know, really have better services and be able to retain folks in those areas. So both on our public employee side and our construction side, we're in full support and really excited about this moving forward, and thank you for your time, and good luck this afternoon.
Hi, my name is Blue Ryan, I've been a Lake County resident my whole life, like 32-ish years, so I'm actually in this demographic about like who may actually be living in these homes. And while I'm fully support like development of the area, and that sounds amazing, and we do need housing, we do need economic development in this area, I think that the rezoning aspect of the Santa Clara area just kind of sidesteps the general plan that already has in place, like, a plan, kind of, for this, and also the duplex idea. Let me tell you, as a, you know, 32-year-old, like, wife and mother of three children is not my aspiration to live in a duplex, especially in a rural area, where, since the Valley Fire, I've been renting a one-bedroom house from my mother for 10 years, and sleeping in the living, in the living room. I would rather continue to sleep in my living room than live in a duplex. And also, I think that, just like the design of having single-family homes and then a bunch of duplexes breeds resentment. Like, if I'm struggling to thrive in today's economy, living in a duplex, watching someone else live in a single-family home right next to me, that's not gonna, like, induce love and come harder with my neighbor, for me, and for a lot of people, because it's getting real out there, kind of financially for people, and especially in this county, like, people have been waiting, it's pretty cutthroat out there to get a house, as someone who's actively looking for a house in Lake County, because I am from here, I do plan to stay here. So I just think that a little, a little prudence, a little like, backtracking and thought about that, like, how you really wanna build that in Middletown, would be wise. And also workforce housing, that's great, I'm a part of the workforce, I do need housing, but also like, I would like, especially for Middletown, since that's the town that I'm from, I would like to build a community that's going to stay there, and if you're intending for 20, 25-year-olds that work at this new development to be living there, there's gonna be a higher turnover rate, because that's not anyone's goal, is to buy a duplex property. It would be an excellent goal to buy a single-family home, one to three to four, maybe even four-bedroom home if you can afford it, in Middletown, with like, a little yard and a fence, and a little bit of privacy. And I know that's not always possible, and I am grateful to maximize this opportunity, but that is mostly what I have to say, so, thanks.
Good afternoon Chair Crandall and members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Rob Hodl, I'm with Cobbins, Pat Struffey and Bass, and we are counsel to the project applicant team, and I just wanted to, I think when I was out of the room, there was a question that was raised about the, an agreement with the Cali Yumi Water District, and just wanted to explain what that is. And what was entered into is actually a non-binding term sheet that basically establishes a framework for a potential purchase and sale by the water district of one acre of the five or so acre off-site well parcel that's discussed in the EIR for this project. And the concept would be that they would buy, the district would buy that, one acre could operate, install and operate a well that could use that groundwater for any of their customers in the district. And if at some point in the future, the project applicant were to build a pipeline to enable water to be transferred from that well to the Guinean Valley Project Site, it could be used, the district agrees to provide that as a backup water supply to the project site. So that's the framework it's conditioned upon, this was entered into before the Planning Commission certification of the EIR, so it was conditioned upon that EIR being certified and the water district doing any additional sequo analysis it may need to do about its use of the groundwater for, throughout the district. But that's, that's the framework that's been entered into, and the project applicant team intends to, you know, assuming the district continues to be willing to move forward with that, the project applicant is very much in favor of making that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Chair Crandall, Supervisors, my name is Jeff Crane, I'm the Superintendent of Middletown Unified School District, a couple of you I have had interactions with, and have opinions on a lot of it, but I'm gonna stay focused on schools, because that's why I'm here. Basically, there were some things stated when I was watching the Planning Commission, I was watching it from my office on Zoom, and no matter how loudly I said it from my office, the Commissioners didn't seem to hear, so I figured I would come and share. There were some folks who made comments about the schools not being able to serve students, children who might come in as children of employees or children of, if they're residents in the Guinean Valley, and there are really two ways, there are two funding mechanisms that will help us take care of that to address the needs of children, students, I end up calling everybody students, it's just what happens when you work in education for that long. First of all, the way that our funding, our annual funding, our ongoing funding is built is by, based on student attendance, and so the more students we have, the more funding we get, we're able to hire more teachers. One of the great things about if we have more students at the high school level, is that we will, we will be able to provide more robust programs and have more variety of courses, and so that would be a great thing for us. One of the challenges, as you see in the news, many school districts challenge with funding in our state, one of the things that goes into that is declining enrollment. We have had fairly stagnant, a little bit declining enrollment over the last several years, so having new families move into the area would be great for us in terms of ongoing funding. The other funding mechanism is that there's always developer fees, so all of these residential units, as well as the construction that would be going on out in the Guinean Valley Project itself, would all come with developer fees. The only, that comes to us as a school district, and then the only thing that we can use those developer fees for is to expand our capacity, so adding classrooms, adding new multipurpose rooms, cafegumatoriums, more facilities to be able to handle more students. And so, the challenge of serving more students, because we do have a couple of campuses that are pretty full, but those things would be addressed by the funding mechanisms that are in place to help us take care of those issues, and so I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you for not yelling at us.
Good afternoon Supervisors, I'm Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer, and thank you for the opportunity to share brief comments from Lisa Judd, who's our housing-focused Deputy County Administrative Officer who is out off-site today. Lake County has a longstanding need of workforce housing. Local schools, medical facilities, trades, and potential apprenticeship programs would all benefit from greater supply in this particular housing category, and these investments would support our broader economy. The recently adopted Housing Action and Implementation Plan, or HAP, specifically includes a call to action to quote "seek funding on an ongoing basis to fund and facilitate workforce housing projects in the unincorporated areas of the county and also the cities of Clearlake and Lakeport. Saying no to proposed investment in workforce housing with this project could discourage other developers from stepping up to invest in Lake County, making it harder to realize the vision set forth in the HAP. Thank you for considering our county's profound and enduring housing needs in your decision-making." Again, those are comments from Lisa Judd, our housing-focused Deputy County Administrative Officer, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public?
Hello, my name is Dolores Parker, I am not a public speaker, just setting this record straight. I do have a couple of concerns and questions regarding the housing in Middletown. I am a 20-year property manager and real estate agent, I've worked in Napa and this county. Couple of things that I would be concerned about, workforce housing is needed, family housing is needed, I have spent a lot of time housing transitional workers, short-term workers, nurses, doctors, PG&E, and it is needed. My only concern is, I'm really nervous, sorry, like, ha, security. You have two demographics going into this Santa Clara area, you have transitional people, you have families, so you have two different kinds of possible lifestyles coming together in one plot map. It's not that that can't happen, but it needs to be carefully considered. I'm not against duplexes, I think they're a great idea, I'm just not sure four bedrooms in one duplex is a good idea for transitional. I'm concerned about security, as a female coming out late at night in Middletown, I just am concerned about security at night, we've had incidences at the laundromat and on the main streets, I've had contact multiple times by LEO law enforcement officers for camera stuff to try to figure out what's going on, there is a homeless issue, so those are concerns for me. The other thing is traffic, parking, every 30-year-old I know in this county needs a car, they have to have a car to get around. This isn't Sacramento or San Francisco, it's not very easy to get around, so that is an issue, and I know that there has been talk about buses taking people back and forth, but after hours, they need cars, so that is an issue that I think needs to be addressed through traffic lights. If you have a problem at night in Middletown and you need to call the sheriff, they will respond, but if another call comes and that has higher priority emergency, that gets first track, and they will call you back and say, "We're so sorry, we cannot respond right now, I've had this happen, and we've had to figure it out on the ground." So those are concerns, when you're putting together this R2 zoning, which I'm not opposed to, I just think it needs to be carefully considered what that's gonna bring to the table, and what the demographics are gonna look like in a mixed bag. I don't know if I'm communicating well, but I'm attempting to. So just that is my biggest concern, is the safety of the residents, keeping that ability to walk around downtown without problems and the traffic, and then how's that gonna work on boots-on-the-ground in that community and that little plot map? You know, single ladies coming home at night, families running around, kids, that kind of stuff, so just for your consideration, thank you so much. So just for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Supervisors. My name is Shannon Sanders. I'm from Middletown. Just had a few thoughts about the project. It's almost a good, I was thinking about it. It's almost a good thing it took so long to get this project to be considered because it's been scrutinized and analyzed so much. Like they say, the better the planning, the better the end result. And I think this one has really been planned out. Couple of things I like about it. I appreciate the bias to hire locally. I think that's going to help out a lot, a lot of young folks. One of my nephews was going to be here today to speak about the job issue. And unfortunately, he couldn't wait long enough because he had to go to Marin County for a job. And he's, he's really conscious of how awesome it would be to have the jobs in this, in this community. Speaking of that, it appears that they were averaging out about 2,700 jobs per year. I guess those are the direct jobs, but the indirect jobs could be 33% of that. So it's, it's really a great opportunity for the, for the young folks. Concerning the Santa Clara housing element. It just reminded me on my real estate days, some of the nicest developments that I saw had a mix of like duplexes and single-family homes. So I liked that fact that it was planned out that way. It adds a nice, nice mix. So those are about my thoughts, thoughts today. Really appreciate the opportunity to express them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Chair Candell and the Board of Supervisors. Appreciate the opportunity to provide a public comment. I want to bring up two things. I'm a member of the Heavy Civil, I'm sorry, my name is Justin Ingram. I'm a member of the Heavy Civil Infrastructure Construction Industry. And, you know, I've reviewed a lot of plans, a lot of different projects. As I say, this, this job kind of represents the pinnacle of sustainability and development. So I think that's super impressive. And two, we employ a lot of Lake County folks here. And a lot of them are just traveling out of town every day to go to work. So I feel like this job, this project represents an opportunity to just keep folks local and employ a significant amount of folks here locally. So, yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon Chair Candell. I'm Lake County Board of Supervisors. My name is Amanda Martin and I am the CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. I am also a Cobb Mountain born and raised resident. Went to school at Middletown High School. And I think like a lot of folks, when I first learned about this project six years ago, I was apprehensive and I have gone through the full turnabout where now I couldn't be more excited about the potential of this project for our county. After the valley fire, I very deliberately moved back to Lake County to be a part of the rebuilding of our community here. And it has not been an easy road. We all know that. Lack of housing, lack of jobs. And now as I stand here before you in this vantage point of CEO of the Lake County Chamber of Commerce, I can tell you that we need this. We need this injection into our county. You know, we hear from our restaurants, from our hospitality industry in general that their numbers are down the last couple of years. They have really been struggling. And so what was mentioned before about the indirect, you know, economic infusion into our county will be huge. And I appreciate the way that the developers are taking in everybody's considerations, everybody's concerns. And there's a lot of things that I'm excited about, including the reduction of fire risk by 50%. That's exciting. 2,688 jobs per year. That's incredible. And also, this has not been mentioned before, but they have protected 3,700 acres. They put into a conservation easement. So that land will be protected in perpetuity. They also, I believe, are funding 2 million in additional offsite conservation projects. So all those things are really exciting. And as everyone else is touching on, we need something to attract the younger generations either to move back here or come here for the first time and build their lives here. We need this kind of attraction into Lake County. And truly, I'm just excited at this point. So please take all the support that you're hearing today and use that in your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Shane Stanger. I'm a small business owner. I do fire recognition for a lot of the cleanups in Middletown area and Lake County. Third generation here. I have a lot of family members here. I think there's 30 kids between all my families in this county. One of the most common things we talk about is what our kids are going to do and then this next generation. And this is a very hopeful project to give our kids another generation here. I have a lot of people I knew growing up. They're either in jail, dead, or moved away to find other opportunities. And I think this project will give us a lot of hope in cleaning up this community for what it's known for in the Clear Lake area. So I'm very hopeful for it going through so we can stay here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? All right.
Good afternoon Chair Candell, Supervisors. Margot Cambara, Lake County resident. The Guanac Valley project presents great potential and great opportunity for Lake County. We can take a page from other municipalities to maximize that opportunity. We've heard from several residents that jobs are a huge concern here. Jobs to keep our young people here, jobs to keep future generations here. So let's learn from other municipalities who have talked to their developers in the community to get specifics. How many jobs are we talking about and at what level? Bringing in what kind of income? We just don't want low-level service jobs. We want jobs with a career track. We want jobs that provide a living wage. And I've heard the developer say that, but I think we would be wise to tie that to conditions of use or conditions of approval. Lot of communities were promised big things and the developer didn't deliver. Or the big corporation came to town, started building and then left and did not hire the dozens, the scores of local people that were promised. So again, we have opportunity here. Let's make the most of it. If that is your decision, let's have those conversations to find out what indeed is opportunity here for workforce development to keep local people employed. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello. I'm Todd Fiora. I'm the General Manager for Caliomi County Water District. As the legal counsel for Maha said, is we entered into a term sheet to lay out the framework for us Caliomi Water purchasing one acre piece of property and drilling, owning, maintaining a well where we can use for Middletown. And if Guanac needs water, we will send them water. Our biggest concern was in the EIR showed, they had that property. They wanted to drill a well that could potentially produce 1,000 gallons a minute or more. So that being 2,000 feet from our primary well source, we were concerned with it affecting our only water source in the Caliomi water basin on a quantity level or quality, water quality level. So we worked with Kevin, John and Randy and came up with this term sheet. It's the best solution for the water district. And we're happy with where we are with them in that they agreed to let us look for water and purchase a piece of property and control the usage of the well. And our biggest thing was if it affects us, can we turn it off? Or can we tell them to stop with us having ownership of it? That's our biggest thing is we could say we're not able to produce enough water for Middletown now because of this well, so we can't send you water. And it, I believe it protects Middletown on the water side of things. So that's it. And we're happy and we're in support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Tom Lasik. I had a great opportunity to visit the site. It's, and actually prior to that, I would like to mention that I did have concerns at the planning commission hearing in July primarily around fire safety. Not so much the resiliency. I think that's frankly a grade A resiliency plan. I don't have any issues with that at all. It was primarily around evacuation. And I had the opportunity to actually visit the site and it is incredible. I actually don't see any reason why it shouldn't be approved. I think though, there should be some conditions applied. One is Butts Canyon Road. Butts Canyon Road is a two-lane road. And in the plans and also I think the Attorney General has expressed concerns as well about that either being an evacuation concern either now or in the future. I think it is certainly solvable. I think the county can work with the developer and through funding that is available for fire evacuation to improve Butts Canyon Road so that it can provide suitable ingress and egress simultaneously. Right now, most of the conversation's been around State Highway 29, 53, Cal Fire. But getting there is going to be a challenge. I think that's certainly solvable. It should not be a showstopper. But it should be something that the county should work with the developer to approve that road. They already talked about 10-foot shoulders that are hardscaped. Shouldn't cost that much more to chip seal that and make it an emergency evacuation when necessary. The second thing is the conversation on the housing in Middletown. I think again, that's solvable. I think there's some legitimate concerns of having that type of mixed use. The data that I've been able to see is that 94% plus or minus of the rental units are either studio, one-bedroom or two-bedroom and less than 1% are five-bedroom, four-bedroom. I, I think you need both. The places where you see such high density of that type are usually like college campuses and resorts, like ski resorts and things like that or large youth camps where they have the staff. And I think that's necessary. I think you need that seasonal housing. You do have the risk of inviting conflict between that type of housing and regular housing. But those are all solvable. You just have to find a way forward working with the developer to, to make that happen. Again, my biggest concern is the fire, but I also appreciate the concern about the housing in the city of Middletown or the town of Middletown or the Middletown City. But you get the idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello everyone. I'm Nancy Rosika. I am a resident here in Lakeport. I graduated from Clear Lake High School and I am now a student at UCSB. I'm going into my last year and the reason I decided to speak today is I hear a lot of talk about the younger generations. I'm 20, so I think I am the younger generations everyone's talking about. One of my biggest struggles right now going into my last year is what do I want to do after college? I have been trying to find any opportunity possible to come back to Lake County. I think one of the best things about Lake County is that we are such a tight-knit community. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. But there isn't opportunities for younger generations to come back. So that's been something a lot of people, like my classmates, struggle with is we love it here. This is our hometown and we love everything about it. It's just there is no opportunities for us to prosper and to do more with our lives. So I do think that this would be a great project to bring younger generations back and keep us, to keep contributing to our community that we all grew up in and love. So I just wanted to share that. That's it.
Thank you. Any other public input? Comment, sorry. Public comment? How about Zoom? All right. You can unmute and state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Cutter. I am a wildfire mitigation specialist here in Marin County. I formerly was a wildland firefighter and archaeologist for the Forest Service a number of years ago. To me, and I want to count. First of all, thank you for letting me just briefly, just to address you all today. I really appreciate all your time and energy in this. I just wanted to let you know, as a Marin County wildfire mitigation specialist, Marin County would have loved to have this opportunity to build a resilient community such as Guanac Valley Project is proposing. They've done their homework and then some. We're busy trying to retrofit our built community, which is like the horse is already out of the barn. And here we can build it from the ground up. That's what they're proposing. And just as a wildfire mitigation specialist, I would just like to say that I'm for this project. Having grown up going camping in Lake County and then in turn bringing my kids up, up to Lake County, Lake County is a near and dear place in my heart. And I just, I'm excited for this opportunity. And frankly, I just wonder if this is, project is, is, is not able to go forward. I just wonder, when is the next opportunity like this where a developer is really sought out? Fire professionals, scientists and modeling and the community's input. I understand the concerns. This is a huge change. But I think, you know, they've demonstrated, demonstrated themselves as a willing partner to work with y'all. And I just want to say that this is a gold standard that I've seen. And this is, I, it's been very interesting to be a part of this project with the UC Berkeley Disaster Lab. So that's all I have to say. And if you have any questions, I am available for, you know, anything as a, that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments before I close? Public input? Public comment? I keep seeing input. All right, I'll close. Public comment and bring it back to the board and for further discussion and I'm pretty sure action. Supervisor Owens, in your district, so you should start out. There you go.
Okay. All right. Early on, back when I was campaigning and then several times since I've been sitting up here, I have met with the project managers at the Guanac Valley. And so I'm going to kind of go over an overview of what our concerns were and how they were handled. I know that there's people watching on Zoom and I want to get to those, those issues that we have had. So the number one was the water well on Butts Canyon Road. The water well on Butts Canyon Road where in the EIR it states building a water pipeline from there to Dieter Lake. So I'm going to come back to that one. Look, I'm going to move on to fire mitigation. With the fire mitigation and the emergency access was a huge issue as well, although the water took precedent over everything. After visiting with, with Guanac out there onsite and looking at their availability and bringing our sheriff onboard out there as well as Cal Fire and looking at what they have in place and that I really think that it's not as big as, big of issue as we originally thought. What I was worried about hugely was the infrastructure to get people out of the area. And that is our responsibility to make sure that we can evacuate people. And with the infrastructure not being in place and looking back at the valley fire where we were, they were backed up throughout Hidden Valley and could not even make it to highway. to Highway 29, it was a huge concern for me. So when I went out and looked at what they're building and the shelter in place, I had asked our fire departments, our sheriff prior to that, both our sheriff and the fire departments, as well as going to CSAC and asking state level fire departments. They were, they all seemed to be opposed to sheltering in place. They just wanted to get people out of the areas for the safety. After everybody went out and looked at the project and how it's being set up with the fire resiliency and the green belts, I think everybody felt better about it. I've talked to both the Cal Fire representatives as well as our local sheriff, Mr. Bingham, and they're all feeling really comfortable with that particular aspect, which made me feel better. I'm not an expert in those areas, so I needed to turn to the experts to find out if it was good. And I'm feeling much, much better about it. As a matter of fact, they have been kind enough to let me know that because of the Grange Road entrance coming out onto 29, right near, within a mile of the roundabout, they had said, you know what? If Highway 29's bogged down, you can shovel people to us for sheltering in place. We will take you in. So that made me feel good about the project and that we're not going to be further congesting an already bad problem. So that has been solved in my mind. The air, the seaplanes coming in and out, there was some people out on Big Canyon that had some concerns about that. They have reduced their hours of operation from seven to seven to I believe eight to, is it eight to, eight to whatever it is. Eight to what? Eight to eight? Okay. So they've moved them, they've adjusted their hours so that they weren't waking people up and doing, hopefully during dinner. So, and then the fly patterns, we looked at the flight patterns for them taking off and, I mean, not taking off, flying out of Dieter Lake. And it doesn't look like they're really going to affect the houses that, where I was visiting people. So it looks like they're going to be further west before they're turning. So that was an issue that was brought before me. The prime agriculture, looking at that issue, the, some of the portions of the prime agriculture that looked like it was going to be a loss really is not a loss. The footprint of the house is much smaller and they were taking in a larger portion of that, the whole acreage, but much of that will still be planted in vineyards. So they've agreed to, to develop other prime agriculture lands to protect our agriculture interests here in Lake County, which is huge. I mean, I'm all about agriculture. So that was awesome. One of the other issues I brought up early on during my campaigning was buying locally and hiring locally. And it looks like that they're all about that and with a tune of about 2,600 and grab some of that back. And I think that these kind of projects here could be beneficial to a lot of people in the area and help our business people that are here in Lake County. The housing in Middletown, housing project in Middletown, I'm going to hit that and then jump back to the water. The housing project in Middletown, looking at the maps, it's not really out of, in my opinion, it's not really out of the norm as there is the R2s sprinkled around in the area and even some R3s. The fact that it's located close to the school, it's also kind of hidden off of, it's on Santa Clara, but it's kind of hidden one block back. So it's not, I don't really feel that it's going to be a detriment. There are concerns that have been brought up to me about the number of bedrooms per house. Now originally, when I looked at this and read the documents, I actually misread them. I was one of the people that misread it as I seen 1,300 square feet with five bedrooms. I'm like, what? Okay, so that was the footprint of the house and it was two-story. But there was nothing like in parentheses, 2,600 square feet. So that made me feel much better. I do know that looking at the average household in Lake County is something like 2.3 per house. They will be bringing forward a team and letting people kind of have input on what will be going in that area. I'm not opposed. I don't feel that it's going to be a detriment to have the, a section of that rezoned to an R2. And with being close to the schools, having a pool, all the amenities that they're going to be having, I think it can, it's a huge, it's a great opportunity. Coming back to the well, that was my line in the dirt, Middletown Water. They had purchased, I think it's 35 acres there across from the cemetery. And in their EIR, it states that they were going to be able to pump the water from there out to Dieter Lake. Now, question being, what, it showed the pipeline going around to the back of Dieter Lake. So I got Todd Flora involved with the Caliomi Water District. And to my knowledge, I believe that there is, there is a contract that is giving them the opportunity to drill a well and provide water if they need it. It's looking though, like they have hit, found enough water onsite and within the perimeter of their own ranch that they probably are not going to need that water. However, I do have one little concern with, I think it's Mr. Randy, the attorney making the statement that it's a non-binding. So the fact that it was just stated that it's a non-binding contract, I would like to make this a condition because I was feeling much better about the contracts until the non-binding word was brought up a few minutes ago. So I would like to make sure that that is a condition of the approval. It's my responsibility to protect the people of Middletown. And I know that there's people in Middletown right now that are needing water that are south of Middletown, that have to haul water. And eventually, we would like to have them hooked up to our system. So I think that's, that kind of concludes what I have to say. I think this is a phenomenal project. I think it's an amazing opportunity. My only concern left is the non-binding. I just want to make sure that, that we have, I know that I've talked to Todd frequently and that they've hit water and they're, they are doing testing today as far as quality and quantity. I believe it'll be a couple of weeks on the quality. And, but just as long as that's sewed up, you've got a thumbs up.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. We did appreciate the ongoing dialogue with Supervisor Owen and the developer. And as a result of that dialogue, a condition was added to the use permit that was already approved by the Planning Commission that restricted additional wells getting drilled in that location. I will defer to County Council regarding the fact that we do not have the authority as a jurisdiction to require a binding agreement, but I'll defer to them for further explanation.
Hello, Supervisors. The, there was a condition that was added to the, the use permit, which restricts the number of wells that the applicant can drill to one and also conditions it on whether or not Caliomi actually chooses not to drill a well. And since they are in fact testing, it sounds like they will. So that in and of itself is binding. However, the use permit was approved by the Planning Commission and was not appealed. So it is not before you today, so you are not in a position to amend it. And I, we don't, the county does not use its conditions, as Mireya, our Director Turner had noted, to require third-party contracts. So the county does not regulate third-party contracts. Where your authority lies is within the impacts of the project and how that water, whether or not the water and the project's use of the water is appropriate under the rules. And the EIR has found, the EIR as adopted by the Planning Commission has found that it is. And then again, as stated, there is that condition attached to the use permit, which does restrict the number of wells and condition it on Caliomi not drilling their own. The matters before you now, the resolutions and ordinances, within those parameters, you can consider what the water use and the application to the project within those resolutions and ordinance presented to you today and consider making the findings under those, if that makes sense.
I think the developer agreement is an opportunity for providing input of hope to continued conversation with Caliomi. Like you said, we can't mandate anyone else to do something, but we can put in there that we would like to see continued conversation regarding collaboration between Caliomi and this developer within the developer agreement, I would suspect. Is that correct, Ms. Johnson?
My apologies, I had to get the mic. Yes, you can express a preference for working with local water districts. It can't be a condition that they enter into an agreement with the water district, however.
It would just be some added language to, that we're hopeful that that conversation continues or future water availability for the project.
You could.
Something along those lines.
Yes, you could.
And I would support such a language. And I guess I would request if there's a consensus here, can you draft up something that we could add that would be appropriate to support that? Because I just made that up and that, that's not going to work. Do you mind if I ask Director Turner some questions or would you rather I pause and wait?
One second. Go ahead.
I think it would take, we could certainly come up with language, but it would take a few minutes to work with community development and the applicant to find where appropriately to place it and draft some language.
I may have more.
So you want to just get into the questions you have then?
Yeah.
In case there's more?
Yeah. So I have a, and I know we're not looking to change these, but I want to better understand. Condition number 61 for conditions of approval. And let me read you exactly what it says on there. Where was I?
Is this the conditions of approval that were approved by the Planning Commission?
Yes. I thought I had it open. There it is. 61, "The entire road network within the Gwinocque Valley shall be irrevocably," messed that up, "offered for dedication on the final maps as a public roadway and public utility easement. All roadways shall be named, subject to the approval of the county surveyor. The roadway and utility easements to remain private to the subdivision will be delineated on the final maps and addressed through the offers of dedications." Are all these quote unquote "public roadways" going to become private or will there still remain any public roadways within the context of the Gwinocque Valley Project?
Thank you. I can, I can answer that. As part of a subdivision process, roads are offered irrevocably for public access as well as offered for addition to the county maintained system. Historically, the board accepts the offer of dedication for public access, but denies adding them to the county maintained road system. Since it does describe both public and private roads, those will be clear on the subdivision, on the tentative subdivision maps as far as the offer goes, typically on the front page, separate from the actual diagrams of the maps. So you will see those at a future meeting. And any roads, I understand, will remain open for public access since the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting did say that the public would be able to come onto the resort, use the farmer's market, attend events, things like that. So I do anticipate that once the board accepts the irrevocable offer of dedication for public access, they will remain public. It's irrevocable.
So then my next question, and I feel like you tried to say it, but I just want to make sure, are we responsible for the maintenance and the upkeep of those roads since they are public roads?
No. Within the, within the documents of the project, it does talk about the maintenance of roads being the responsibility of the residents and the CCNRs, the Property Owners Association.
Okay. I appreciate that. And that leads me to the other big road, that's Butts Canyon Road. So one of the projects that has been approved a long time ago, I don't know what the developer agreement looks like, but that's with Brass Field. From my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chair Crandall, there's a per-case amount that is put aside to help restore and maintain High Valley Road on every case that is sold at Brass Valley. And in order for the trucks to be able to continue to use the road, we collect some funds in order to do so. I don't see anything in here for the ongoing upkeep of Butts Canyon Road. What I see is some initial investments, but not continuous investments. And the use here, especially the developer agreement, we're looking at 35 years, which I'm wondering if that's normal for 35 or if we just decided 35, but that's aside. I'm wondering if there's a way to, because traffic is going to have to come through Butts Canyon Road in some way, shape or form in order to get to that final destination. I would like to look into what's the possibility of matching something similar that we already have in the books. It wouldn't be something novel to ensure that there's on a, a per stay fee, I guess, that's added to the hotel stay or the resort stay that goes into a coffer that's specifically tailored to be used for road maintenance on Butts Canyon Road. That is a very long road that requires a lot of asphalt or chip seal or whatever it is that we would be doing that doesn't necessarily benefit too many community members down there. There are some, but typically we would be looking at putting pavement down where there's a large number of folks that benefit from putting it down. We've been struggling with roads and I don't want to walk away. I would personally rather not walk away today with a developer agreement that says nothing about the future of that road, even though there's potential for thousands of people to travel every single day to get to work, let alone the people that will be staying there. So that's something I'm kind of interested in looking at, at what can we do? I get it that there's some large numbers being thrown at us for sales tax, for property taxes, but more things happening in a community also recreate new issues that we have to deal with and it's going to get more expensive for us to deal with these things. And so that money may not solve the Butts Canyon problem if we don't have a specific funding source that helps ensure that we have some funding coming in for that road. So that's something that I would really like to see.
I will defer the nuts and bolts of that answer to County Council. I do know that historically, the county has had a variety of that type of use connected impact and they've been retracted due to unenforceability or other legal complications. I can assure the board that just as with every other development project, there are construction-related road impact fees that will also be included in this project since it's part of every normal building permit application.
But again, those are initial investments, not ongoing investments.
As far as an ongoing activity linked impact, I would defer that to County Council for further review and response.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the issue of fees, just to confirm, I believe Supervisor Sabatia, you're referring to perhaps making potential amendments to Exhibit I, the development agreement in order to incorporate such proposed fees pursuant to a development, the development agreement entered into, that's what I need confirmation on.
Yes, Exhibit I. Correct. And to be honest, I don't know that it's something that we could figure out today. Might need to be a further amendment. might need to be a further amendment, because obviously, that requires negotiations and conversation. I'm looking more for, I think it's a legal capability, that would be for County Council to let us know, but if the board's not interested, then there's no reason to look any further. So I'm looking for, is there consensus of interest, and is it legally available for us to look into that?
Well, the question of looking into it, that can be provided by, you know, direction of staff, as far as, without necessarily making the amendments today in the development agreement. And I believe Senior Deputy County Counsel, Paul Johnson, has some additional comments on that issue of fees.
What's generally presented before you today is a big-picture overarching project documents. The specifics to individual developments, as far as who cares for what, who pays for what in relation to roads, are generally more granular analysis that occurs when the applicant comes back to develop that section. So when that happens, there would be other agreements, like subdivision development agreements, and other approvals by the Planning Commission and potentially the board for those, for those specific developments at that time. And so certainly, you can consider and give staff direction today to see if there's someplace to put it in the big picture for the project, for the development agreement. You may also defer that analysis to when the applicant returns with a more detailed application for those roads and their associated developments.
And I'd be okay with that, and I guess I see where it shows community benefits. I forget where, what exhibit, there's so many exhibits. But the community benefits, while I appreciate them, are also beneficial to the developer to have those, because they're on their compound, they're going to benefit from having these amenities. I'm looking for things that are being utilized in order for this development to function appropriately, where can we benefit in a different way to ensure that we're able to keep up the maintenance of what is being used to access that development? So if that comes as a future developer agreement, that's more drilled down and more granular, as you stated, I'd be happy to make that, get that consensus from the board if there's an interest, that that's what we want to see coming in the future as well.
Go ahead. Yeah, Vice Chair.
Not acting on that today doesn't mean we can't act later, we still have other opportunities to consider, such as Supervisor Sabatier is saying down the road when the applicants come forward.
So for recommendation number four, which is the Exhibit I, that attached, is the resolution attaching the developer, the developer or development agreement, under Supervisor Sabatier's request for a consensus, as I understand it, that can still move forward, but with direction to staff, under the, as outlined by Supervisor Sabatier, to look into potential ways and come back to the board of addressing the possible fee, imposition of fees for, and to be reflected in possible subsequent agreements, to be more granular. That's my understanding of it. If I'm incorrect with that, please feel free to do so. Essentially, that action would be done pursuant to direction of staff. And the recommendation under, under recommendation four, the one that attaches Exhibit I, can still move forward, as I understand it.
Yeah, I think we can wait for the specific development plans. I don't think we need to do that today, because there's going to be several different phases of this, and I think it makes sense to take them, development by development, and phase by phase. But we can give the direction to planning right now, I don't think that it needs to come back to our board, just understand that that's what we're going to be looking at, looking for, when these plans start to move through.
Isn't it fairly common within the, like, when you're doing a subdivision, where there's a fee that comes forward to maintain the roads and the other amenities? I think that's pretty normal. I know they have it in Hidden Valley, and so I don't know if it could just be a portion of that be taken out for maintaining and improving Butts Canyon Road. That might be a thought.
I'm not familiar with that type of fee. I know there is a standard fee in land subdivisions called the Quimby Fee, which is actually a set aside for park maintenance and development.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I know there's, we just talked about it, there are road impact fees, public works typically, whether you build a house or something else, there is an impact fee that comes along. I'm not sure that the fee that you're mentioning is continuous, and that's what I'm looking for. And I think just consensus is good enough for me to say we are interested in having a deeper dive. It doesn't have to happen today. I just wanted to make the statement, because we're kind of giving a little bit of a blessing today to move forward, but to me, there's something that I feel could be missing, and getting that consensus makes me feel more comfortable with moving forward.
So there is road impact fees, I know, because when Lewis Aron, Senior Senator, did some upgrades, they were imposed, yet Ninth and Tenth Streets still remains after 30 years undone, but they are collected.
Right, but we're talking about something beyond.
I know, I'm teasing.
It is a day, it is an ongoing fee.
So that's why I like the idea, I'm in consensus with looking into that, because you can designate it like Brass Field.
I'm good, I'm good with that consensus.
Sorry about that. Maria, did you have anything to add?
Duly noted, thank you.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a few. Were you done?
No, you go, I've already talked too much.
Okay, I just, a couple of things, I wanted to just make sure I'm understanding and have it clarified right, but, because we've had a lot of talk about the water supply, and that's been one of my concerns from the beginning. But as I understand the water assessment, everything that's accounted for there is coming from the property. Not, we're not considering use of water from Middletown for what this assessment is, is that correct?
Correct, this is outside the supply for the Caliomi Municipal Water District.
Okay. Regarding the workforce housing in Middletown, you stated that there was another R2 zone right next, adjacent to this property?
It, I think it's separated by one parcel, but it is on the same road, yes.
Okay. A lot of the concerns that I've gotten and heard with regard to the rezone relates to people's concerns about the conceptual design, like, I think people are believing that's set in stone, but really, all we're doing today, if we approve that, is approving the rezone of that area. The developer has told me that they are more than happy and committed to continuing to work with concerned folks in the Middletown area to discuss how this project is going to look down the road, so I think that's important, I think that still should continue to give those folks the opportunity to work with you on how the final project would look. So that's, but I really think that there's been a lot of, you know, assumptions about that, and that's simply a concept at this point, that it could look 100% different from what's been presented in these plans. I've spent, you know, a couple of times out there for several hours. One of my other big concerns in the beginning, and even before I was on the board and monitoring this project, was the fire mitigation, fire prevention, evacuation routes. I think that it's been well thought through, I think everything that could be done to minimize fire concerns has been done. The secondary route has been added, we have all of these locations where, and I know this is kind of a new concept, but where people could potentially shelter in place. I think there's a lot of opportunities there, even if we recommend people to evacuate, we still have those as an option, so I think a lot of good work's been done in that area, and I feel comfortable with where we're at. We've done, or the projects done the best they can to really put people in the best position with fire safety and evacuations. There was a public comment regarding the types of jobs out there, professional jobs, that was one of the conversations that I had with the developer just past Friday, when I spent a few hours there, and we discussed a whole list of jobs that could be long-term there. I think one of them, if I remember right, was a veterinarian positions related to things like that, because of, you know, the horses and the animals that are going to be out there, and a lot of other management jobs and things like that, that are, that are good jobs, that are going to be paying a good wage, and be attractive to people to apply for, so. So I think there has been a lot of thought put into that, and there's a lot of potential there. And I think, I didn't have a lot of other questions, just because I've spent a lot of time talking to the folks there and looking at the documents, and I think a lot of work's been done over the past five, six years, so. Thank you.
Supervisor Pisgah?
You did bring up a lot of my points, but thank you, that's okay. I think the, I think there's been a lot of people that are kind of caught up with the concept plans, and all we're doing is looking at the rezone. As you mentioned, tentative subdivision plans are going to come, and so there's a lot of details that need to get worked out in a lot of places, but as our Deputy County Counsel mentioned, this is the broad overview, the general plan. And I don't have issues with this, I think the plans have been designed and redesigned and refined, and we are in a place right now where this is a pretty spectacular project that, that we get to, get to have in our community. I've had a lot of conversations with folks about jobs, and I know people keep thinking that these are low-entry jobs and low-income jobs, these are not, these are professions, and these are tracks. Currently, many of the people that live in South County commute to Napa County to work in these jobs, at the Four Seasons, at the other resorts, and on Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, where I serve, the Napa County supervisors are always asking for more and more Lake County employees to work in the resorts, because they, nobody can afford to live in Napa, they live in our county. So I said, "You can have them for a little while," but they're going to be working here, and we're going to be keeping them here. So, I mean, we have the salmonier at the Four Seasons servers, we have all of these people that commute over the mountain every single day, and so this is going to be a great opportunity for them to live and work, along with the construction workers, too. We see them leave every single day, driving hours to those job sites, and we're going to keep them here for decades, so that's really exciting. The other part I'm really excited about, because this is the world I live in, is the architecture, the IBHS standards. This is going to really be a gold standard of development. This is what it looks like to develop for mitigation. So we are really busy in the Kelseyville River area, rehabbing homes and bringing them up to a standard that we know, the science is well documented, it's very well proven, that is resistant to wildfires and is hardening that community. So when we see this as being built from the ground up, that's a great opportunity, we're doing both in our county, and I think that there's going to be a lot of lessons learned as we look at how these projects roll out together. I will say, the conversations about evacuation planning and sheltering in place, these are really great examples of how we need to move forward, but I would like to see some MOUs in place with our sheriff's office, so that it's not just talk, so that it's incorporated into our safety element and our evacuation planning, so that it's, it's all understood well before we have a disaster, which we know that we are going to continue to have fires, and how we adapt is how we survive. And I think that this is a project that's really going to help us thrive.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Rasmussen reminded me, full disclosure, I've been out to the project, I went to go visit it with my Planning Commissioner, went there multiple times before this even went to court, so appreciate all the hospitality that you guys have given all of us to allow us to travel around in your beautiful property. Everything has already been said, this project has definitely showcased what you can do, and I have high hopes with what this can do. Just one last comment, I do want to, just my personal statement, looking at the property with the housing, how many people did you say would potentially be housed on the Santa Clara property? Director Turner? Approximately?
There will be less than 50 with four bedrooms, so maybe 200.
So my.
Looking to the applicant to nod. Yep.
Okay. Just putting it in your head, as it gets further developed, just a concern of 300 people trying to get out with a small amount of road access that there is. Not sure if there's a need for something else to have a third way, just in case the fire is right where the roads are, but just looking at it, it does create a slight concern to have such a heavy amount of density of folks in that area without a backdoor exit, as we just kind of created for this project down in the Guanac Valley area. So just wanted to put it out there, as I'm looking at it, I love what it can be, but at the same time, thinking of the fire safety as well for those areas, so hopefully, we'll keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you were going to say something. Did you still want to comment? Are you okay?
No, I was, I was just going to verify what Maria said about the number of residences or between 200 and 250.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So that leaves me, so yes, I did, I went out to the site as well, and went on the tour, and it was pretty extensive, I seen the video, I know that we've seen the video the first time this came, and I think it was the same one that the gentleman showed me. I think, I don't know where to start, but one of the things that I always tout, I go to, sometimes I go to DC and advocate for Lake County, and one of the things I always say, because they don't typically know where Lake County is, is I ask, because, you know, in DC, all they do is drink wine, as we know, and so I say, "You know where Napa is, right?" And they say, "Yes." I says, "Well, we're right above Napa, and we bring, they take a lot of our grapes, so you really need to help us if you want to keep drinking wine." This is an extension of that, if you think about it. The area, like you said, people travel out to work, you know, out of, in Napa County and all of that, or in Sonoma or wherever. This will keep some of them there, here, locally. The other thing I think about is, you know, is what Nancy had mentioned about the pipeline of kids and not having a place to stay, they leave. I could, there's so many people I could think of, there's one of my high school friends that's in a different county that ran for sheriff, you know, there's another friend of mine who, in the BioChar Project, always calls in from Hawaii and does all this work looking into all these different things, and I'm like, wow, if you could do that here in Lake County, that'd be great, you know? It just, it just provides a stopgap for people before they decide to just leave, right? So I just think about that, I think about the kids in general, like, they want to go off and go to Santa Rosa, or they want to go to Sacramento, or LA, you know, so having an opportunity for people to stay, I know that another thing they talked about was the pipeline for kids to actually work locally at the site, an intern, whether it be interns through school or interns through college, that's another aspect that I liked that was mentioned as well. So for me, I just, I think it's a good project, I think it's going to help. The other thing I thought about was the fact that it is going to bring in these tax dollars, it's going to bring in revenue. This helps the whole county in general. I know, I think about my district all the time, and I just, you know, it'd be nice to eventually have one of these, but it can't happen without this happening first. So. So there's always opportunities for us to have projects like, like this, but they get stopped, you know? And they get stopped because of whatever reason, you know, whether it be fire, whether it be NIMBY, whether it be whatever. But, you know, it gets frustrating because we can't improve our county without these, these things moving forward. But I, what I do like is we're having these in-depth conversations. We're, we're talking about how we can mitigate some of these issues when it comes to fire or when it comes to the homes and traveling, traveling out if there is a fire, things like that. That's how, that's how we get it done. I know that there was another project in the same area before. I don't know where it's at still. I know it's come here, Valley Oaks. But I know that's been on hold for specific reasons or whatever the case may be. But having these discussions in depth and trying to get to a point where we can get things moving, that's, we talk, you know, when you talk about the TID, they're promoting Lake County because of either hospitality or for tourism. Tourism's the biggest thing. We, you know, we tout the number one bass fishing lake, you know, whether I, I'm not good at fishing, but it brings people here, right? This is another aspect we can think about. So I think this is a good project. I do worry about one thing, but I think it, some of it's been addressed. It's the AG letter that came out after the planning commission meeting, if some of those issues were addressed. I don't know, Nicole, if you or Maria would like to address that. Or not the AG letter, I'm sorry, the Attorney General letter. Sorry, I wrote AG, yeah. So my bad. Long day.
The Attorney General representative did contact my office to say that they were sending that letter, just to make sure that all of the terms with the settlement agreement between the Attorney General and the applicant had been clearly and specifically delineated or covered in the project. So it added to a little bit of wordsmithing, but that's all.
Essentially, the Attorney General settlement was between the applicant and the Attorney General's office. The county was not a party to that. So it was the applicant who was agreeing to changes to their project that they would make prior to resubmission. And then the county would analyze the project as resubmitted. And the AG's office was in that letter. They included the county because probably two reasons. One is a courtesy and probably also because the county was a party to the, the overall case and still was, is. And so, but it wasn't technically speaking, a letter to your board or the planning commission because you, your bodies did, those two bodies did not draft the project. So the change, it was just a matter of clarification and making sure that, that, working with the applicant to make sure that the project presented did in fact include those changes and was clear on what those changes were.
Awesome. Thank you for answering that and helping me out. With that, I don't have anything else. Anybody else have a comment from the board or we can go from there?
You want me to go ahead and make the, if I may just remind the board, there are three of the sample motions where we should add the "as amended." And I'm happy to walk you through that. It's for motion number one, number three, and number six.
As amended.
And as a good place to add that is when you get to the listing of the exhibit in parentheses, that's a good comma, pause, point to add "as amended."
Okay. I usually don't talk this long, but we'll get after it.
What happened?
Okay, I may-
Hold one second, here's Lloyd.
So if you're bored and just to add to Director Turner's statement just now, there are a couple of other recommenda, items under the recommendations, list of recommendations that would also need to be as amended. And for further clarification, because at least the three, first three items deal with ordinances, typically that's a two-part, two, that typically involves two motions because the first motion being the first reading and then the second motion being scheduling it at the next regularly scheduled board meeting for a second reading. So if your board wishes, Mr. Chair, I could walk through the language of those.
It is my understanding that the only ordinance that requires a second reading is that first one. The other two are rezone map ordinances and there is no specification in our county code that they require a second reading. So we have worded it differently for the sample motion number one, which does require advancing to the next available agenda versus the other two that have ordinances. However, I defer to county council, however you want to do it.
Yes, Mr. Chair. If I may have a moment, just a few minutes to Director Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will take a five-minute break.
Perfect.
Don never came back.
I know, I feel-
Don never came back.
I know, I feel-
Quiet all of a sudden.
All right, we are back from our break and it looks like we're going to come back to order so that we can conduct action.
Okay, I would like to make a motion and I think.
Did you want to?
I was going to ask.
Yeah, there you go.
I was going to ask Mr. Lloyd to help me with the rewording of it.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
Thank you Supervisor Owen and thank you, Mr. Chair. So after some coordination discussion with Director Turner, given that there are some proposed amendments that, that are submitted for your board's consideration, that would have to be referenced in the motion language. I can walk your board through the, the actual motion language. When it comes to the amendments, both Director Turner and myself and Senior Deputy County Counsel Nicole Johnson can walk through those amendments for purposes of presenting them to your board for approval of the motion. So if your board wishes for, I can proceed with recommendation number one. The motion language for that would be, would be to move to approve the first reading of the draft ordinance under the recommendation number one to be read in title only, as amended, based on the findings in the board's memorandum dated August 26, 2025. That would be the first motion and Director Turner can then walk through, walk your board through what's being amended in that document.
Thank you. The amendment in that document is located on Exhibit F, the draft ordinance, and it is on page 14, Section 2, Subsection C and D. Subsection C currently reads, "The Board of Supervisors has adopted the Statement of Overriding Considerations and a Mitigation Monitoring Reporting Program and has certified the final environmental impact report pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act." It would be amended to read, "The Board of Supervisors has adopted the Statement of Overriding Considerations and a Mitigating Monitoring Reporting Program," period, and it would end there. The remaining part of that sentence would be removed and subsection D would also be removed.
Do we need to take each one?
And for that, as part of the first motion, your, your board can, or one of the members of your board could just say, "So moved."
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And at this point, this be, with this being the ordinance, the clerk of the board could read the title of the ordinance.
All right, it's an ordinance establishing regulations and development standards for the Gwinoc Valley zoning district or GVD district.
Then we're still in recommendation number one. The second motion for that recommendation would be to move to approve that the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting for consideration and possible adoption.
Is that to be September 9?
And that would be September 9, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
For recommendation number two, the first motion under that recommendation would be to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only, as amended, based on the findings in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025. And the amendments to that, you don't have any ready. The amendments to that would be on Exhibit G, both on the title and on the, on Section 1, there are, there is a blank portion in reference to the zoning map number. It references zoning map number, number 3.7B1 point blank. The blank should be filled in with the number 408 in both the title and, and under Section 1. That would be the amendment. And that would be the motion so your board can, or member of your board can just say, "So moved."
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
And as the second motion for that recommendation, that would be a motion to approve that the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting. That would be September 9, 2025 for consideration and possible adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, as part of, the first part of the motion, I apologize for that. The clerk of the board would read the ordinance in title only.
All right. An ordinance amending Section 21-3.7 of Chapter 21 of the Ordinance Code of the County of Lake by adopting a sectional district zoning map number 3.7B1.408, rezoning the lands for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project.
All right.
So moved.
I think we're good on that.
Oh, okay.
It was already, it was just read in title. So moving on. So for recommendation number three, this consists of two main parts because procedurally this was brought to your board in accordance to the automatic appeal provisions of the zoning ordinance. The first recommended motion to your board would be to grant the appeal based on the findings of the board in the, found in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025 and also based specifically on the findings made on pages 38 to 39 of the July 24, 2025 staff report. That would be on the appeal issue and that would be the motion language, recommended motion language.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
So the, still under recommendation, still under recommendation number three with the granting of the appeal, the second main part of that would be the, the recommended adoption of the ordinance. So the first motion to that would be to move to approve the first reading of the ordinance to be read in title only, as amended, based on the findings in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025, as amended. And Director Turner would walk, can walk your board through the amendments proposed under this draft ordinance.
Thank you. On the first page of this ordinance, Section 2, currently reads, "The Board of Supervisors has independently reviewed and considered the environmental effects of the rezone as set forth in the final EIR that was prepared for this project and has independently reviewed and evaluated the sequa findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations referenced herein." The amendment is to remove the words "independently reviewed and." It will read as follows. "The Board of Supervisors has independently reviewed and considered the environmental effects of the rezone as set forth in the final EIR that was prepared for this project and has evaluated the sequa findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations referenced herein."
And for your, also for your board's consideration, staff also has an additional amendment, again referencing to the blank portions of the, under the title and also the, on Section 1, referencing the map, zoning map number 3.7B1, the blank portion should be filled in with the number 409, both on the title and also on Section 1. That would be part of the amended, amendment as well.
So moved.
Hold on just one.
Typically, that takes place after adoption. It's a number that's assigned by the clerk of the board's office.
Okay.
Awesome.
Because it was verbally stated, and I apologize for doing this, but you repeated the exact same section two twice, we are removing "independently reviewed and," and it's just going to be the Board of Supervisors considered the environmental effects of the rezone as set forth, correct?
I did not mean to be obtuse. The words "independently reviewed and" are actually repeated twice in the statement. It will be the removal of the second writing of "independently reviewed and."
Okay, I don't see, I don't see it twice.
It's on line 21 versus line 19. Line 19 will remain as is. Line 21 will be amended.
That's strange, mine does not show that, but thank you. I apologize.
Okay, so, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
All right. It's an ordinance amending Section 21-3.7 of Chapter 21 of the Ordinance Code of the County of Lake by adopting a sectional district zoning map number 3.7B4.409.
And still, we're under still recommendation number three, the second part of the motion as it pertains to the ordinance would be a motion to approve that the draft ordinance be advanced to the next Board of Supervisors meeting. That would be September 9, 2025 for consideration and possible adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
So for, now on to recommendation number four. That one. That one is a resolution and so your board can just offer the resolution for this particular recommendation. There is, there were some amendments proposed in the course of your board's discussion and with some, and staff has some suggested language that we can walk, that we can bring up to your board as, as possible proposed amendments specifically to the development agreement and that would be part of the amendment so that the resolution, then the motion language would be to offer the, and I'll have to read the whole title. The offer, because there's three resolutions. So under recommendation number four, it would, the motion language would be to offer the resolution approving the development agreement DA 24-01 for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project based on the findings in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025, as amended, and the amendments are.
This amendment relates to the Caliomi Water District and your board's request for language to be added to the development agreement. It would be recommended that it be added to Section 12 titled Certain Developer Obligations and the language recommended is, "The county encourages the developer to continue to work with the Caliomi Water District regarding the district's purchase of a portion of the offsite well site and the district's operation of a well there, thereon pursuant to the existing term sheet between the developer and the district."
And I so offer that as stated.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Swatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Osmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye. The resolution is passed, five zero.
And then on to recommendation number five, that is also a resolution. So the motion or the language there, action language there would be the, to offer the resolution adopting an amendment to the Lake General Plan Policy LU 6.12, GPAP 24-02 for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project based on the findings in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025.
I offer that as stated.
Resolution has been offered.
All right, Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Swatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Osmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, that resolution passes five zero.
And on to recommendation number six, this is also a resolution. So the recommended action here would be to offer the resolution adopting an amendment to the Lake County General Plan and Middletown Area Plan, GPAP 24-01 for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project based on the findings in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025, as amended, and Director Turner can point out those amendments for your board.
Actually, I was mistaken on that one. There aren't any amendments. Thank you.
Okay, then I offer it as stated.
Okay, Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Swatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Osmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, resolution passes five zero.
Then on to the last recommendation, recommendation number seven, and this is also a resolution. So the recommended action here would be to offer the resolution approving the water supply assessment report for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Plan Development Project based on the findings in the board memorandum dated August 26, 2025.
I offer the resolution as stated.
Resolution's been offered.
Supervisor Owen?
Aye.
Supervisor Swatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Osmussen?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye, resolution passes five zero. All right, that covers all of the actions that need to be taken for this item and it looks like we'll go ahead and close this. And thank you again for the presentation, everybody for coming in and giving some input, discussion and, and you know, following this project through and keeping your eye on the prize. Thank you again for coming and presenting as well.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our last item and I think that if, if anybody wants to share their calendar, 7.1, but, but I think we're just going to go ahead and forego that and close and adjourn the meeting here at 4:49 PM. Thank you, everyone.